Hi, Mel. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. Yes, I know it's been awhile. Yeah. I tell you, thank you.
I presume this is where I'm supposed to be, yeah? Just wanted to check some of my history on this job at Abney Hills. It goes back to my first meeting, I think, in fact, March of 2020.
Yep. We did sketch plan approval.
Right. Yeah, we need a couple more, Mel.
There's only four of us and Marcus didn't think he would be here.
How many do we need for a quorum?
We need one more.
Four, one more?
Well, I would argue that we have a quorum because Sharon has resigned.
Okay.
So I would argue that three is now a quorum.
Right, of the act of...
Of the act of members.
I'm not sure if that's the municipal interpretation, but we can go with that.
Yeah, that's 30%.
He said it was a little gray, but clearly we have to get some.
Yeah.
So what I would propose is to do is conduct it with the three of us as it was a normal meeting.
Okay.
And then let him get clarification.
Right.
And if it's not, then it's just... Obviously, we'll take Gregory's communication either way. And then the only thing that would not be official would be our vote at the hills, which we can have next month.
Okay.
Is that there?
That sounds good.
Absolutely. I've got a number of questions about that anyway. I think most of them can be answered, but that might be a good thing in any event. Are you keeping well or deceiving?
Yeah, I am. I... Yeah, I have, and because I've been home. Matter of fact, I... Most of the state employees went back to work, but I didn't. I had some ADA issues, so I have just been in the house, beginning to now come out, you know, since I've been vaccinated and all that stuff. But I'm still wearing my mask.
I don't blame you for that. I've only recently stopped, but I've had my full set of vaccinations and I'm just hoping that everybody else has.
Yeah, that's the thing.
But in this kind of environment, when I know pretty much everybody, I'm fairly relaxed, but I wasn't inclined to attend July the 3rd, because of the crowds here.
No. Yeah, you know what I did on the 4th, because I really wanted to see some fireworks? I... There's a school across the street, like an alternative school or something. I parked over there and I could see everything.
Well, how about that?
You know?
Probably not the prized location.
Yeah, I did. I did. Because I certainly couldn't, you know, come around a whole bunch of crowds and stuff like that.
You don't get any second chances, that's the point.
No, no. And I had two first cousins that just refused to take the vaccine for whatever their reasons, and both of them have COVID, and one of them was hospitalized. And I'm hoping that he'll do okay.
Yeah.
Nothing to joke with.
Mr. Steve, are you going to stream this on... Are you there yet? Okay, thank you. I do believe, based on the town administrator's remarks, that a quorum equals 50% plus one, and right now we're sitting at 50%. So we are not going to go through the formalities of the agenda, but would say to Stanley Martin, first of all, apologize for y'all coming out tonight and us not being able to meet a quorum. Certainly, that is not our intent, but we will certainly come back at this in August and allow you time to speak and time to make your presentation in August. There's no reason for us to duplicate that, based on what Carol just told me. But we will give the COG the opportunity to give us updates and take us through the next two phases of the comprehensive plan. And I'll give it, if everybody's okay, let's give it another couple minutes, because sometimes Marcus comes in late and I would hate for y'all to slip out and then him to walk in. So let's give it another couple minutes and then we'll give it a go.
50% plus one.
Oh, plus one. But she asked, you know, to let her know if you were going to attend. And I responded, I'll be there. Send him a text message.
Oh, you did?
No, I said, you can send him a text message. Sometimes people answer texts when you don't answer the phone. Are you coming? Because we're waiting.
I don't know if that's necessary.
No. This is the only perk. Oh, water. But you have to have travels and distance. There's so many rules about that.
So many rules.
You know? Yeah. You can't even feed people.
Right, I know. You wouldn't ever get that water. No, you can't. That was the only perk.
I tell you, my son works for the private sector, and I just could not believe the difference. I've always worked for the public sector. Couldn't believe the difference. I said, "Well, how much annual leave do you have?" "We don't get annual leave. We just do our work and then whatever time..." Oh, God. I went in the wrong field. Make it on highs and perks.
Okay, it's 10 after 6:00 now. I think we've got what we're going to get. So again, the representative from Stanley Martin. He said he'll be here at 6:15. Y'all willing to wait? Well, again, I apologize, but I just texted him and he said he just got back in town. He totally forgot and he'll be here by 6:15.
I do that with all my millennials. If I call them and they don't get an answer, I send them a text, just like that.
I'll say to either one of them, "Do me a favor and call your mom and ask her what she needs from the store." "Where are you going?" "I answered the phone." "That's a caller." And when you're working, she answers her phone. She's telling me her name's her daughter. But that's the first go to.
Yeah, they go to the text. Because they're on the phones all the time.
So when it rings, why wouldn't it ring?
It's not as important as a text.
I hate it all the time.
Yeah, I tell you. Then if you don't have your phone, it's like, oh, my gosh. Because I don't know anybody's numbers anymore.
I don't either.
You know? I just don't.
That was one of the things I did before I got into the career. So with the kids, we call our grand...
Mm-hmm.
I said, "What's her phone number?" "She has a number?" I said, "She has a phone number." So they memorize all the numbers before they run to work.
My two-year-granddaughter, they're doing the same thing with her. Not with phone numbers, but where she lives, what's her name, what's your birthday.
How old are you guys?
Mm-hmm. And now she's claiming her birthday is in July, because one of the little girls that they share nannies with, her birthday is in July. So my granddaughter's birthday is in December. So she's decided she's going to move it to July.
Everything had to be moved. And I couldn't transfer all my contact or all my phone numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Before I tried to report everything, I was saying not to ask them to put members in.
Yeah. I know answering different... But you know, my problem with that is, you know, with my business side, I know where we're going through this, and I know there's contacts that can build this. But I wish people moving to the area, and they bring a phone number. So their phone number is from Connecticut.
Mm-hmm.
And their four houses down.
Mm-hmm. Now, every time I answer a number like that, it's either for your car warranty or Hilton Head, Hilton...
So your car warranty?
Yeah, my car warranty.
My...
It's one or two. Your car warranty, we've been trying to get in touch with you.
Thank you for your patience. I believe he's on his way in and we'll hit the ground running as soon as he takes his seat. We would applaud for him, but... Hey, there. No, I appreciate you being here. I appreciate it. No problem. I appreciate you being here. Okay, we can now officially call this meeting of July 6, 2021, of the Blythewood Planning Commission to Order. The time is 6:15, and we can declare a quorum. And with that, Ms. Serlin, can we do a roll call? Here?
Yep.
Thank you very much. And can you confirm we had proper notification of the agenda? Thank you. We have the agenda before us this evening, which was emailed out ahead of the meeting. We'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with one change. I would like to move action item four up to action item two, which will give citizens' testimony regarding action item. We'll take that ahead. But that'll give the COG a little bit more time without feeling somebody's waiting on him. And with that, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
There is a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The agenda is adopted. Let's stand for the pledge, please. Thank you all. We did not meet in June, so before you are the minutes from May 3 of 2021. If you've had a chance to read them and look over them, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Chair, as presented.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. And then we'll do citizens' testimony regarding the action item. If there... Is anybody wishing to speak concerning the Abney Hills subdivision, Phase 4 preliminary plat approval? Anybody from the community wishing to speak? Okay, and with that, we will take up the action item and I will turn it over to Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a preliminary plat for the Abney Hills subdivision, Phase 4. So this is to the west of currently Phases 1 through 3 across Swigert Creek. It's 131.94 acres. It's actually... The total lots are actually 172, not 174, as shown in my memo. The average lot size is 18,097 square feet. Sketch plan approval was approved on March 2, 2020 by the planning commission. And so this is the construction drawings and is based primarily on the subdivision, on the sketch plan approval. And if you look at the end of my memo, I've... Kirk and I have reviewed the plan and just have some general engineering comments that we have already passed on to the engineers. They're working on those. But... And it took into account the ordinance as well as the conditions associated with sketch plan approval as well. So that's what you see at the bottom of that, of my memo. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Williamson, just for my own benefit, really, because I came into this project when it was already sort of underway. According to our current ordinance, the minimum lot size for R-12 is 20,000 square feet, and the average is shown here as 18,097. Could you just explain or remind me what the agreed lot size was for this phase?
It's 12,000. It was the minimum lot size for R-12.
That was changed in my time on council to 20,000. And I looked up the ordinance this afternoon just to verify that in my own mind, and it's shown as 20, on what I saw.
All right. I'll have to check on that. My ordinance says 12,000, so... When... Do you know the date of when that was? I mean, if the sketch plan was approved with these lot sizes on March 2020?
Right. Well, what I'm remembering goes back to my time on town council, and that ended November 2019. So I'm pretty sure it was during 2019 that that decision was agreed upon by council, and that was an attempt to slow down the rate of residential development in the town. I could not find the ordinance or the minutes related to that, so I'm just relying on my memory, but, you know, it's pretty clearly in there.
Okay. I'll just have to check on that.
Shane, question for Shane. Do you know what your lot size is in Ashley Oaks 8 and 9? Sir?
I'm sorry, I can't be any more specific than that, other than... At the time, it was a very significant issue to the town with so much development going on, and the only way of trying to put the brakes on that was to amend R-12. Like I said, I'm just very sorry. I could not find the specific ordinance or the minutes that referred to that.
Okay.
Maybe these questions should be directed to Stanley Martin, but I do have two or three other questions, just in the interest of transparency. Another detail on the drawings specifically state that some of the lots encroach upon the floodplain. Not significantly, but I was curious to know what action is like to be taken on those lots from the homeowner's perspective.
From the homeowner's perspective? I'm not sure what they would... I know that there was an issue with regard to the floodplain, with the concern being that there might be some water backed up along Swigert Creek as a result of some of the crossings. And we had an engineer go through and approach that question and properly size some pipes working in Richland County and so forth to be the right that concern, so that was not an issue. The only issue was water would still be coming back into like a common area, but no lots were affected by the...
But I'm just putting myself in a position of a homeowner, and I would certainly want to know ahead of time that my property was actually within the floodplain. Even if it is, and from what I could discern from looking at the drawings, it tends to be just in the sort of back end of properties, or they're backing onto the floodplain. But just about all of the drawings specifically draw attention to that fact. So I just want to be sure that, you know, homeowners don't go into this not realizing what that potential hazard is.
Yeah, appreciate the concern. When we do the building permits and stuff, I think if there's stuff in the floodplain, we have ways that that is addressed in terms of setting elevation marks to show where the building will sit. And as far as plats for the individual lot plans for the homes, those final plats would also delineate wherever that floodplain is. That'd be an element of closing that they receive at the closing table.
Thank you. If I can carry on.
Keep going.
I certainly do recall seeing the traffic study that was completed and carried out and presented to us at the March 2020 meeting. I can't remember the precise discussion that we had about that. I'm just a little bit surprised that the road improvement takes place on Turkey Farm Road and former, not actually on former outside of the development. But who knows the way SE DOT works? So I'm assuming that that's just because it's a significant arterial road that's going to see a lot more traffic. But the point that struck me, for no particular reason, is that the guarantee for that roadwork was just two years. That just struck me as being a short period of time. That means the guarantee for that road widening would run out before the Phase 4 would be completely built out. So I suppose the question is, does that guarantee satisfy the minimum requirements of SE DOT?
As the document was prepared for SEOD disapproval, I would presume that it would have to, yes.
I thought so. Okay. And last but not least, again, in the detail, it looks like you're going to be planting a very significant number of trees, like very significant, 2,000, approaching 3,000 trees, something like that. What... In brief outline, how would you approach that? Do you just plant the trees as the lots become completed and you've got residents there that can actually take care of the trees? I mean, you're not going to plonk 3,000 trees down and hope they'll survive on their own, presumably.
Correct. I mean, the installation of the trees would follow the progression of the houses being installed and having all the landscaping put in place for practical reasons, of course. Fulfillment of the landscaping ordinance and the plans would be part of the overall completion that we would approach at the final of the completion of the phase. At that point, we would have to met all the requirements.
But I certainly appreciate your intention to do that. Regularly, I think we as a commission regularly come back to our green spaces, our trees. We are Blythewood. It's not called Blythewood for no reason. So I appreciate Stanley Martin investing in re-establishing that green space. So I appreciate Stanley Martin investing in reestablishing that, that green canopy over, over time. Thank you. I think that was, I think that was it from me. Thank you.
Other commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I didn't.
I had the opportunity this afternoon to speak with a town administrator on this and had, obviously, had had a prior conversation with our prior administrator who left before Mr. Williamson came. And when we take a sketch plan to a plat approval or when we get to this point, the town I came from, this, this is not a planning commission function. This, this would be a staff function. And often, when a developer takes a sketch plan approval and begins to develop based on that approval, I would never want a developer that came before a commission I'm chairing to feel like the rug had been shifted or pulled. There is a time for us to do that and we, we try to do that the best of our ability at that preliminary meeting when we're giving you approval to move forward and start spending money. So I'm going to, this won't be our last, I'm sure, but I'm going to work with Mr. Williamson and see if we can get that shifted to allow staff to work hand in hand with the engineers and the developer to carry out the wishes of the planning commission and subsequently the town council. So we hopefully won't pull developers in here time and time again. But all the questions, obviously, very relevant. I have had numerous calls from a resident on Mount Valley Road. We've talked about construction traffic on Mount Valley and you've put a sign, no construction traffic. You put a gate up. You have gone over and above. I was out there this weekend. I've actually, on three different occasions, gotten to talk to residents on the road that intersects with Mount Valley Road coming out of Abney Hills, so on the Abney Hills side of the gate. The complaint was they were going around that gate and construction traffic was still tearing up and down Mount Valley Road. And the gentleman who lives right, right beside the gate said he had not seen construction traffic and he, because of the pandemic, has been working out of his house. So had a lengthy conversation with him, thanked him and wanted to pass it on to Stanley Martin. I appreciate the cooperation with the gate, with trying to control construction traffic and listening to residents who were complaining to the planning commission and town councilmen and staff. So appreciate the effort and keep up the good work in that regards. Mr. Williamson, anything you need to add to this?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Can we get clarification on Mr. Gorges' question concerning lot size? I looked up the ordinance here and I, I think in the actual paperwork on the ordinance, it just has not been changed.
Yeah, I just have to check on how that occurred because, yeah, I mean, this is a hot off the press ordinance that should have everything up to date. So I can verify that, certainly.
Okay. All right. With that, if there's no other questions? Is there a motion to move forward? Okay. Motion to approve Phase Four preliminary plat. Is there a second? I got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your time and sorry for the delay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and with that, we're going to move on. We have agreed that every other month we will take two bullet points from the comprehensive plan elements. And welcome back Mr. Gregory Sprouse from the COG to walk us through those two. Mr. Williamson, you want to add anything before we do this?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Appreciate you being here and look forward to seeing what you're going to say here.
Thank you all for having me again. And so today, we'll, we'll be talking about probably two, two of the very important ones that y'all have a lot to comment on. So I'm going to try to go through some of the data pretty quickly and just see if we have any, if we have time to maybe get, get your thoughts on a few of these things. So we are going to be talking about the housing and the transportation elements today. And the important thing to note about both of these, well, particularly for the housing, as we talked about on the population, what we're doing is we're making use of the, the most recent five-year estimates of the American Community Survey. So these, this was actually just released as the five years going up to 2019. And, and they were released late, late last year. So those are the, it's the best data available until we get the new decennial census data. But it, but it is important to note, it is estimates. And so for a town the size of Blythewood, you'll notice a lot of the, some of the data points, they, they just don't have enough data to really say whether or not the number is statistically significant. So I've noted there's some places where you'll see like a 0%. And just basically what, what to note about that is that it means that we're, there's just, it's such a small number that we, it may not be zero, but it is, you know, it's, it's, it's important to note that it is a very low number. So I'll point that out as we go along. So the, the things that we're going to be talking about today with housing is under the, the Planning Enabling Act where we want to look at kind of the distribution of housing, the type, age and condition. We have to think about affordability as an issue and that is prescribed in state law and we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that. And then kind of outline the occupancy and ownership characteristics. And then on the transportation side, we want to take into consideration road improvements. It's a multimodal element, so we have to think about bike and pedestrian facilities as well as transit. And then we won't really get into this today, but one of the things that, that's outlined in the state law is that the transportation element, like all the elements, has to be thought about in coordination with the land use element. So we want to keep, keep that in the back of your mind as we go through some of this discussion today. So for that, the occupancy and tenure, the, the blue bubble there, you'll note, I, I put that up there because when, presenting a lot of data on percentages. So the estimated number of housing units in the town, this is just within the municipal limits per the American Community Survey is around 1,175. So again, that's not, that's an estimate. So we, we may know that there, there's probably a little bit more than that at the time, but that's the number that a lot of these percentages are based off of. So the important thing to note here is that in terms of occupancy, 90, about 90% of the housing units are occupied. So that means we have about a 10, 10% vacant housing units. Compare that to, on the other side of that line there, I've, I've put the statistics for South Carolina just to give you an idea of how, how the town compares with the state. So typically occupied housing units for South Carolina are at about 84%. Homeowner vacancy rate is about 4.9%. And then the rental vacancy rate, this is where we've got one of those zeros I was telling you about. We know we have renters within the town, but the number is so low that it just really doesn't show up on the American Community Survey estimates. And then the, the, the last number down there is owner occupied units. So that's one of the big numbers that we look at in, in terms of trying to get a, an idea of the, the breakdown between owner occupied units and renter occupied units. So Blythewood is about 94.4%. And you can see when you compare that to statewide, South Carolina is at 69.4%. So that's a significant homeownership rate within the town. The average household size of owner occupied units, this is an important number. And I, I've, I've been looking at this number and it's, it's, I want to kind of look at it in, in terms of the, the historical trends on this, because that's a, that's a high number at 3.04%. And if you compare that to South Carolina, 2.5%. What, what it does is it signifies that we have a lot of families that are, that are in town, that are making up that 94% owner occupied rate. But that's very important when you're, when you're thinking about like some of the other elements. Having such a, a large household size, average household size, means that we, it has implications for schools and, and parks and a lot of the things that we'll be talking about in the community facilities element. And then when you look at that in terms of the, the small renter population in the town, it's even higher at 4.97%. So you can see again, those numbers may be a little high in terms of them being estimates, but when you compare them to the, the rates in South Carolina, it's definitely a, a big jump significantly more. In terms of housing type, we want to look at things like the, you know, the size of, of houses. What are they, are they single fam, predominantly single family versus multifamily, those types of things. So Blythewood, what, the highest number of the statistics that the American Community Survey puts out is about 94.1% single detached units. So that means that predominantly the, the housing type within the town is large, large houses that are single family and detached. And you compare that to South Carolina, 84%. There, again, there's a lot of zeros on the numbers in between when you get to, to two units and three units. And again, that's because we, we don't have a lot of multifamily within the town. So those weren't really showing up with the American Community Survey estimates. But we did have 5.9% mobile home units. And then when you're looking at the size, those two bar graphs at the bottom, the one on the left shows just the total number of rooms. So you can see about 33% of the housing units are nine rooms or more, so very large houses. And the one on the right is the number of bedrooms, which that is kind of interesting that, you know, 30, 43% are three bedrooms, but, but we have nine room or more houses is the highest percentage. So, you know, again, there's a little bit of things probably going on there with the estimates, but it definitely does point to the fact that the data is supporting, which you all probably already know that the predominant housing type are, are large, single family detached housing units. So this is what I always like to show, to get into the data and look at sort of the time series and try to understand when the majority of the housing stock was built. So the graph on the left shows the, the census data and it breaks it down by decade. And so that, that's, it's really interesting to note that the majority, over 30% of the housing units in the town were built 2000 to 2009. So you contrast that with, I always, I probably mentioned Casey a lot when I'm talking to you all because we're wrapping up the comp plan with the city of Casey. And it's a good, it's a good comparison on this, this graph because for Casey, it's the exact opposite. Most of the, the majority of their housing stock was built in the 1940s, 50s and then the predominantly in the ranch housing area in the 1960s and 70s. But here, we, we can see in this pan, this also shows in the building permit data, which I'll get to in a minute, that the, really a lot of the, the housing was built in that pre-recession area from two, era from 2000 to 2009. So that's where you, you see that big number. But then also, we're starting to see recovery from, from the recession, you know, built after 2009 on into the current time. So it's very interesting to note. So what, what we'll go through is a time series of these maps that show you the distribution of where the, the structures are over those, over time. So I, I've aggregated them. It's not every decade, but I think every two decades. So I'll go through this slowly. This first map shows the structures, it's not just houses, but all of the structures that we've pinpointed from Richland County's parcel data that were built before. I have a greater than sign there. I think it's supposed to be the other way around. So the houses built before 1950 and that's what you see in red. The next map shows the, the black dots are the ones that we just saw and the red are the ones that are active during this period. So 1950 to 1970. So again, not, not a whole lot of building activity during this time period. But then when you get into 1970 to 2000, you start to see the housing stock filling in a little bit more within the town and you, and you start to see the, the beginnings of the, the spatial trends that we know today within the municipal limits of Blythewood. Then when we get here, 2000 to 2010, where the majority of those subdivisions are being built, you can really start to, start to see a lot of that activity taking place. And I've, I've done this not just for the town, but you can see a lot of the development occurring outside of the city limits. And then when you get to the 2010 to 2018 timeframe, which is the extent of the data that I have, you, you really see more of that development occurring, but you also see the filling in of new phases of already established developments. So you can kind of see that taking place particularly down on the southern end of, of the municipal limits. And so this also shows, as I mentioned, when you look at the building permit data, so this is residential building permits and not just issued within, the way I, I pulled this data from our database was a mile, I think, radius around the existing municipal limits. And so those numbers that you see aren't just within permits issued by the town, but in the area around Blythewood. So you see the same trend, the 2000, this goes from 2010 to 2020. And the number of units, really seeing a lot of the, the highest activity in the 2015, 16, 17 and 18 timeframe. And when you look at the value of the permits issued, the total value, those are estimated values when they, when they apply for the permits, but still it's, it's a pretty significant number in terms of residential development that's occurring. And then we only, we really only see two significant multifamily unit permits being issued. One in 2016, 140 units, and then one in 2020 of 48 units.
2020 is the one they're doing now. They would have pulled the permit in 2020, correct?
Yes, that's right. That's the new senior.
Yeah.
And the 140 would be the point, correct?
Yeah, there's a, I'm not sure what the values are. It's interesting the, and that could be, if it being a senior oriented facility, that could have some of the.
Welcome to the construction work.
Yeah. Yeah, and, yeah, and changes in time. That's right. Okay, so then we get into, into some of the value, housing value of owner occupied units. So the, the median home value, according to the American Community Survey is 284,900. And when you look, compare that to South Carolina, it's significantly higher. So that again, kind of goes back to what we were talking about before, showing the, you know, the size and type of housing that's being built within, within the town. And then the, the bar graph shows kind of within those different price points where, where you're, where you see the majority of it. 37.5% in the 300 to 499,000 range. So that's a, a pretty, pretty significant in terms of housing, housing costs. The, in terms of rent, the median rent is about 7, 1,792, which when you compare that to South Carolina, it's also significantly more. And that number there, the 59 is, is according to the estimates, the number of occupied units that are paying rent. So again, that's, that's the, sort of the low estimate of what the current number of rental units are within the, within the town. But it's important to note, with the gross monthly rent, you can kind of see that distribution there and see it, it also tests to the, those high numbers. And those zeros there indicating that the, the numbers are so low that they're, it's not really showing up within the data. But the important thing is looking at the one on the right, which is a gross rent as a percentage of income. And the reason that's important is that HUD defines affordability in terms of whether a person is spending 30% or more of their income on housing. So we do have, when you look at that, 10 and 10.2% are paying 35% or more. So, you know, what do you, the interesting thing about this and the important thing to note is that yes, when you, when you look at it from this perspective, we, we don't have a whole lot of people that are paying more in rent than, than that 30% threshold. But the, the extreme cost of housing within the town, if you were to look at that in comparison to say the, the Richland County area median income, you would see that the, the housing costs are probably not attainable for a lot of, a lot of residents within the county. county. So that's an important to note from the affordability standpoint. Just saying that there, there's probably a lot that, that we, we can be thinking about in terms of increasing access to affordable housing within the town. Okay, so any, uh, any questions so far on the housing? I know one thing I wanted to, I want to follow up with staff on and, and anyone else who has input, but I know in the, the previous comp plan and in the transportation study, one of the useful things that we did was look at some of the planned housing developments and kind of document the number of units that are proposed and, and thinking about, you know, in the area around, just to give a, a snapshot and perspective of what is expected in terms of new housing development. So that's something I'd like to potentially do again. So I know we've got a number of them that are, that are in the works right now that we want to definitely make sure we're paying attention to in the comp plan.
Gregory, where do you get your statistics from, from the, for the renters' numbers?
That, that's the American Community Survey, the census estimates.
Right. The, the only reason I ask is in our own neighborhood, I know there are, there are several homeowners that have left the area for, for work or for whatever reason, but they've not sold their home here and they're, they're renting them out. But I'm not sure that anybody knows that other than the owner and the renter. So that, that might explain why, you know, that, that number is artificially low.
Low, yeah.
Perhaps.
And probably the, the high cost of rent too, when you think about the, probably what some of those, the larger houses rent for, that probably factors a lot into it as well.
Interesting.
You know, when the water and sewer came to the town?
What?
When water and sewer came to town? Cause in the, um, there's a little Blythewood history book on our office and it said in the late 90s and, uh, and that's when you do see a big jump there is, uh, in the late 90s, 2000. It'd just be interesting to know if that was just, I mean, I'm sure it had an effect, but I mean, if, if that was one of the major catalysts or not.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. It probably does coincide with that because I think that was around the timeframe when Winsborough started bringing, bringing the water down. And it, it probably has a lot to do as well with the distribution that you see. So a lot of the, that, that development occurring during that time happening more so on the northern side of town as opposed to the southern. And then, and then in later years, the city of Columbia kind of bringing it up from the, from the south. Yeah, that's probably about right, I think. Y'all have any thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, phase four of Ashley Oaks is, it's, most of those homes are on septic tanks and that dates to the late 90s. But from 2000, all, all the homes are on, on regular sewer. So that seems to tie in very well with what you've just been saying. If, if Ashley Oaks is typical, which, you know, I have no reason to believe that it isn't.
Yeah, and the larger lots more conducive to septic and.
I have a question about when you talk about rental occupancy, are you considering the, like the apartment complexes? We only have one, but.
Yeah, that's what, that, again, it's just, it's census estimate, so that's why I kind of put those caveats in there in the beginning because I know it ju- it seems really low to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then when you talk about having a, um, a multifamily housing complex here, it just doesn't seem to add up. Yeah, that's a, it's an important point. I think we'll note that. I don't know that we're, we can get any more accurate data other than maybe kind of looking at how many units, what the, the vacancy rate is. And I can actually look that up for the, for those facilities and that might help us think about how low that number may be.
And my other question is, when you say rent, you're, you're speaking strictly rent. You're not talking about mortgages?
Correct, yeah, just non-owner occupied.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah.
So the earlier slide showed 100, if my memory is right, 146 units permitted, back to that permit report, 140. So that would be the rental units in the point, total rental units in the point. And you can caveat that by the bubbled number of 1175 or what was the?
Yeah.
Total houses. Just, you're, I agree, that rental seems low only because the point is in the town limits.
Yeah.
On this map, we only have, correct me here, inside the town limits, two large subdivisions that have yet to be completed, which are Ashley Oaks eight and nine and Abney Hills that we just talked about this evening.
Cobblestone, I mean, it's not, there's still available lots out.
Right, still available.
I'd say it's 95% built out, but.
Right. But I'd say Ashley Oaks has roughly, there's probably an additional 100 lots in eight and nine. And then Abney Hills, it's a hundred, how many we talked about today?
Close to 200.
Close to 200.
Yeah, there's 173 currently and then 172 coming.
So it more than, it right at doubles the size of Abney Hills.
Phase three is about to start.
And phase three, which is small, or 34?
Yeah, I was counting, phases one through three was 173.
Oh yeah, okay.
Right. So really what we're talking about this evening doubles the size of Abney Hills.
It certainly does, yeah.
Those are the, those are the only, those are the major ones outside what you're going to be presenting to us in the new comp plan. Yeah, there are some more on the horizon, but at the same time, as we talk about the next element, Blythewood Farms, which is not in Blythewood, you could throw a rock from most of those houses and the rock would land in Blythewood. That affects everything that we're going to be talking about, roads and travel, even though you, you're not crediting any of the, it, it's going to be 300 plus houses in Blythewood Farms.
Look at infrastructure.
Yes, 600 plus.
Major impact on infrastructure.
Immediate.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Very interesting.
Yeah, that's all very good point to add to the discussion. And that is a nice segue into the transportation piece. So, you know, we've, just describing the characteristics of the network, uh, one of the things that, you know, we often hear in public input, uh, in, about the town is the, I, I would say the positives and negatives of the good interstate accessibility. So the, the fact that we, we are on the interstate right, right here gives us really good access to both the Charlotte and Columbia markets. It's a, it's, it provides a lot, a lot of good benefits from that standpoint, but, but also from a transportation's perspective, having to think about some of the negative aspects in terms of, you know, had, a lot of that traffic that does come, come into the town is not necessarily local traffic, people coming on and off the interstates. The interstate accessibility is also another reason why I think the, the, this part of the county, it has been developing the way it is. It's created a, a good environment for the development of a, of a large bedroom community that we've seen. So, you know, have it, thinking about those things, it's, it's just kind of important to recognize that we've got, it's, there's good and bad that come with that, that accessibility, but it is a very important part of, of Blythewood and recognizing that it, it's right, cuts right through the heart of the municipal limits. The rest of the network though, which, which is interesting is that it's mostly made up of two lane major collectors. And I'm using DOT terminology here. So the, the collectors are, are the roads that are defined, they're typically two lanes and provide connectivity to larger arterial roads. And so for a community of this size to, to really have the interstate and then these collector roads, but not a lot of the others, the arterials means that you've got a lot of, a lot of your traffic is being carried on these two lane small roads that were never designed to carry this kind of traffic.
Really?
So we, just looking at that from DOT's perspective, the typical design capacity at the, the optimal level of service for a road like what most of carries the traffic here is about 9,800 average annual daily traffic. So when you actually look at, I'll show you the traffic counts in a minute, you can see where we're at. But before we get there, also in the, and long talking about this in terms of commuter characteristics, it's important to note when we're talking about traffic is that about 89% of residents drive alone to work. And when you look at the travel time to work there, you'll see that most people are, are traveling that 20 to 40 minute timeframe, which means that they're, they're heading into the, the Columbia area and commuting. So that adds to a lot of the traffic. And I, I, I thought I left in enough time today to get up here because I'm coming with the, the peak hour traffic from downtown. And when I got on the I-20, I started to really worry that I did not leave enough time, but I, I made it. But it just kind of shows you that, there's, that's, that's one of the things, as you all know, that we're, we have to contend with is that, that peak hour congestion. And then when you look at the other modes of travel, there's just, there's nothing, nothing else there. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that. So the average annual daily traffic, so the, the orange or the, these are the, the main roads in and around Columbia and, I mean, in around, around Blythewood. And I've, I've just summarized it to show from the growth in traffic from 2000 to 2019. We don't, we don't have all the 2020 data coded yet and there's, I guess, a lot of questions about what it's really going to show because of the pandemic and everything. So it's really probably more instructive to look at up to 2019. You'll see significant percent change or growth from 2000 to 2019, particularly on the, the main roads that are highlighted in orange. So Blythewood Road, Wilson Road, Langford Road, where, when you look at the amount of traffic it's carrying on an average annual daily basis compared to, to where it was in 2000 and what that design capacity for those, a lot of the two lane roads are, definitely seeing some significant congestion issues. And then the, the numbers on the right show just straight line linear projections based on historical trends. So if, if things continue in the same vein in terms of the, the growth in traffic to 2030 and 2050, you're going to see those, the, that traffic volume growth continue to, to just grow and grow. So definitely something to, to be noting in the comp plan and to be thinking about, you know, how we're going to deal with this in the years to come.
Can you flip back one slide? Question for you, what, what indication would the county have that Blythewood Road goes down from 2019 to 2030?
Uh, which, which?
Be the same Blythewood Road, 2019, 11,300, 2030, 10,971?
Yeah, that, I don't, yeah, yeah. I mean, I get, that's just a, a linear, a linear regression model, so it's, it's just basically a straight line projection based on the historical trends. I, I could look into it, but I, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it would really be able to tell us, tell us anything. But yeah, that's a good point. I'll, I'll definitely check that out.
I would, yeah, I would challenge that one.
Yeah.
Like those roads not going to decrease.
Yeah. I think that makes sense. Yeah, and then it, I guess it does show growth.
And it grows, 30 to 50.
And I noticed another one that, uh, earlier when I was looking at it too, that, that shows that same thing. And it was kind of that, uh, I guess the bottom one there on Foremore Road.
Yeah, not my main car, it sounds.
Yeah. Yeah, I, the, probably the more instructive thing is to really look at the, the actual traffic count data on the other side of the table and just, you know, really I kind of put the projections in there just to, just to show for those, those high volume roads that.
And you use, like you said, you just use the formulary projection.
Yeah.
To carry the.
Yeah, now we don't, we're in the process of updating our travel demand model, our 30-year travel demand model. We don't have that data yet, but when we do, when, when that does get finished, that actually gives us a little bit better ability to, to kind of look at some of those, those growth projections on, on the roads. Cause it takes into account like origins and destinations and land use and things like that. And I know for the, the Blythewood traffic study that we did a couple of years ago, they did, they took our, our old travel demand model and tweaked that a little bit. So I, I am, one point I didn't make at the beginning of this transportation section is that, that's kind of an important document that, that we will incorporate by reference into the comp plan update. But it also has a lot of really good data related to, more focused on intersections and level of service of the intersections and things like that, which is a, I'm not, I won't get into that today, but that's a really important discussion to have because that, a lot of times, there's, there's other things that you can do to alleviate some of the congestion when it's focused on those, those intersections. But the, this, this graph shows, that's the map of the traffic counts and then the graph just really gives you, I, I think, I just wanted to put it in there because it, it shows where a lot of that growth. So I, I summarized it here from 2000 to 2019, but when you look at it on an annual basis, you'll see a lot of the growth on, on the, the higher volume roads really, really starting to come in 2013, 2014 timeframe. So that's definitely interesting to see that, that a lot of that growth occurring in the, in the recent years. Okay, so the other thing is to inventory, and this is where I, I'm hoping to get some help from you all too. And I need to, to sit down with, with Carol and make sure that we get all of this, this right. But because of the, the Richland Penny, there's a lot of projects programmed for, for the, the town and the area around the town. And so we want to make sure we're trying to capture the status of those things as we're moving forward. So the, the COES MPO is, are the, is the federally funded projects that come through our agency. And those are, that's a, a long-term, complex process to, that, that takes our 30-year annual federal revenues for road improvements and puts it into a, a capital improvements plan and ranks and prioritizes based on, on need of the entire region. So the, the, the one project there is in the cost constrained plan. And so that means that it, it, it actually has funding associated with it, the number 63, the, the Blythewood Road there ranked number 19 overall. So it's, it's not on the, the top of the list, but it is, it is in the cost constrained plan, so there is some money allocated towards it. And then of course, that coincides with the Richland Penny project, so I don't think they line up 100%, but the fact that the Richland Penny has money going towards that project definitely helps in elevating the timeframe for that. So the, I've, I've just outlined based on the, the latest report from the Richland Penny program showing the status of those, those projects. And I know there's some change since that probably.
You guys have some very recent data. We just had the T-PAC meeting and these are pretty spot on.
Is it? Okay, good. So I don't know, is there anything to, I, I won't read through all of these, but any, anything in particular that you think is important to, to bring up in terms of considerations on these projects?
Just, just the, sorry, Mr. Chair, just the study that was completed by AECOM under the, um, management of the COG. You, you talked about intersection improvements, for instance, have a whole raft of those to, to consider. And, and I, I believe that was a very well worth exercise in painting a broad picture of what the traffic trends are likely to be over the next 20, 25 years or so. So I, I, I think that's our base document that, that we work from. As far, as far as we're concerned, that contains the best knowledge that we have.
And the, the, the way that the, in the executive summary of that report, where it has the short, mid, and long-term recommendations, do those, are we still feel pretty good about kind of how, how those are categorized in there? And I know some of them overlap with some of the projects that are ongoing, but.
Just, just on the face of it, I, I would say so, but, but as, as you implied a moment ago, we, we need to properly sit down and, and study that and just compare what, what was identified a year or two ago with, with where we are now. Because the, the whole picture is moving and changing so, so very quickly.
I, I think the. I think the, if it'd be helpful, we can forward, I can just pull out the executive summary and send it to you all to look at and just give me, if you have any thoughts on it, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
I don't know an effective way to do this or how you have done this for other towns that you've walked through this process. I'm a little nervous on the Richland County Penny projects because Blythewood, we have put a lot of stake in that program producing results, a lot. And as the town grows, we need to be able to look beyond the Richland Penny projects in this comprehensive plan to say, this is where Blythewood has got to be, in our opinion, in ten years, knowing that we may be reaching beyond the Penny project list.
Yeah.
Everybody I talk to is so focused on, this is what the Penny project gets us. But we're growing faster than the Penny project. I mean, I was, and I'll use the school district as an example, I was dumbfounded when they came in and showed us the plan for the new elementary school that will house almost a hundred students less than the current one, the one they're tearing down. And I'm like, how can we do something so short-sighted for long-term goals? So as infrastructure and roads, we have got to plan beyond what somebody else's project is for the town of Blythewood. And then put a dollar amount on it and say, here's how we get there. But if we constrain ourselves to somebody else's plan, a priority list like yours over here on the COES project, what is the total number of projects on that list? Do you know?
The total number? I don't know off the top of my head, but so when I say cost-constrained, so that's the important one because the word, the nineteen there is at the end of that cost-constrained list, but then the aspirations list that's in that plan goes on for a long time, and most of the other projects on there are in that aspirations list, which basically means they've been identified as needs, but there's no money to do them. And when you look at the costs associated with some of those projects, it's identifying how to come up with that funding is the struggle.
Yeah, agreed. The current comp plan calls for walkability in Blythewood, which is kind of what I'm pitching for here. Because the current comp plan to pull off that walkability is, there's such a dollar amount associated with it that nothing has ever been done with it because it's so expensive. So I want to find a happy medium to say, we're being realistic on our transportation needs, but we're not asking for sixteen million dollars in walking trails, or whatever that number is. So we got to find that happy medium, not to be driven by Richland County Penny projects, but looking at Blythewood's long-term needs. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because there are projects well outside of Richland County Pennies that Blythewood has got to address.
Yeah. And that, a lot of those, I think that some of the things that we can focus on are, going back to this traffic improvement plan, are looking at some of those non-wide, road widening types of congestion management solutions, signalization and adding turn lanes and things like that, that I think could have significant impacts over the long term, but probably more attainable than just focusing on widening roads out here.
Which, to an earlier point, that has to be how we got to, Malcolm, on the Fulmer Turkey Farm? Because that's what the DOT study showed when we talk about adding that many lots in Abney Hills. The report comes back that here's where we suggest the improvement, which is so far removed from the entrance to that neighborhood. Now, granted, there is only one entrance to the neighborhood. So DOT casts a pretty large net on the very types of improvements you're talking about. So they're calling for an improvement to be, I don't know, close to a mile or more from the entrance of that subdivision, not the busyway. But we would classify the less-traveled route. Interesting that they put that clarification on Abney Hills.
All right, well, definitely, definitely need to spend some more time on this piece. But, so again, going back to the multimodal thing, so we do recognize, and I think this is actually recognized in the current comp plan, that there are limited bike and pedestrian facilities when you get out, once you get outside of the immediate downtown area. It talks about the, things like the overpass being a priority. But also important to note that, like, with the DOT projects and the Richland Penny projects, that they do take into consideration, or will take into considerations, some of those, the bike ped facilities when they're doing the design. So kind of thinking about how it can make sure we're participating in that process to ensure that all of that gets done the way the town would like to see it. I can't remember, I remember in the two thousand and fifteen comp plan, there was talk about the updating the minimum sidewalk design standards, but that was one question I had is if that has been done since the last, two thousand and fifteen.
I'm pretty sure that the town has not made any revisions to sidewalk plans. And I think that's largely due to the fact that all the road improvements are being paid for either by SEDOT or Richland County. So whenever we have the opportunity, we make sure we have dual-purpose sidewalks and so on included wherever possible. But I don't think we, as a town, have made any attempt to try and put that down in an ordinance.
And I may have been, I can't remember, I may have been specific to, like, the land development subdivision regulations, which I'm sure there's stuff in there.
Just from reviewing Abney Hills, I think it said sidewalks, you know, if required, would do this, but there was no, I mean, it was not a requirement on one side of the road, which you normally see in a subdivision. So I do want to quickly point out, you know, Town Center District kind of did away with all that street design on this side of seventy-seven, but it's still in the ordinance for the other side of seventy-seven, and it does talk about extensive sidewalk. And, I mean, I don't know, yeah, I just need to look at that again, I think, because that's going to be a big issue, I think, particularly when we don't want the comp plan to recognize that here's a requirement in the ordinance that shows a cross-section of a right-of-way with, you know, trees and a median and seven-foot-wide sidewalks. I mean, it's pretty impressive, but I'm not sure if that's, everyone has that understanding.
The multi-use trail, is that supposed to be Boney Road?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
I live on Boney Road.
And that's Creech Road extension.
Yeah, I was, yeah, Creech Road extension. Translating that from my talking notes, errors. Yeah, but so those were, we had proposed, there was a number of proposed multi-use trails that have come up, and I don't think there's been funding identified for much of that work, but, you know, probably still important to think about how that fits into the broader picture. And maybe there's some that have a higher priority or feasibility for other funding opportunities, so that might be something we want to think about, continue to think about. And then I think there was some I mentioned too, the bike racks in the downtown area and stuff, and I don't know if much progress has been made on that front either.
The curious thing about that is, on your earlier slides showing the forms of transportation that people use, nobody uses a bicycle. But on the other hand, there certainly are, you know, cycling clubs, there are folks that use bicycles for exercise, you see them around all the time. So it's kind of hard to put a hard and fast figure on that, but I'm sure if we had the facilities there, then they would be utilized.
Yeah. And probably a lot of that going back to the Town Center concepts and stuff from earlier iterations where the last comp plan was heavily focused on that, so.
Malcolm, bike racks are still required at commercial developments, though. In the ordinance, it's still.
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah.
We do check for that, you know. Not saying that people are using them, but bike racks are still required.
That's right, yeah, they're in place at the library now, you mention it, but I've never seen a bicycle there.
Okay, I think the last piece here is just in terms of transit, so it's important to note, even though we have the Norfolk Southern Corridor running right through the middle of town, no passenger rail service, closest connections in Charlotte and Columbia, but I don't think there's been much movement on this in recent years, but there has been a lot of talk about working to establish inner-city service connection between Columbia and Charlotte, which would likely come right through Blythewood. So that's something I definitely think, you know, still needs to be mentioned in the comp plan. I was a heavy user of the North Carolina passenger rail system when I lived up there when it was first getting going in the nineties, and it's still, I don't know, post-pandemic, pre-pandemic, it was still a very popular service, and they're continuing to add routes. So I think the idea has always been looking for ways to connect into that and to extend that from Charlotte on down to here. So I definitely think that's still a good thing to be thinking about. And then the Comet Route, which was put into place as a pilot route, I know it's been suspended, service has been suspended due to lack of ridership. But I was curious, I know that was kind of established in thinking about it in the context of park-and-ride type of facility. So there's probably still some good benefit to be thinking long-term, especially now that commuting traffic is starting to pick up again about keeping that in the back of our minds. And, you know, are there, one question I had, I know that a lot of times there's even some informal park-and-ride type facilities in places where just people meet up, and so is that still kind of an identified location where the Comet Route was picking up? Is that something to be thinking longer term about, you know, keeping that idea of having some type of commuter-based park-and-ride coordination effort?
That's a tantalizing issue in so many ways. The town tried desperately hard to generate interest and support for the Comet service to introduce as wide a range of timetables as possible to suit the varying needs of folks wanting to go downtown for work and then coming back. And despite eighteen months or two years' worth of trial, most of the time, the buses were running empty. And you just can't force people to take the bus. It's such a massive change in, you know, culture and convenience and everything else. It's very hard to just throw in a towel and say that that can't work or that it may not be a success in the future. It would be very, very nice to think so, and who knows? It might be forced upon us at some point in time with the growth of the town and congestion and road safety and all those other considerations. But right now, I don't think the Comet would entertain the notion after investing so much money and losing so much money trying to make it work.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. You know, one thing, kind of on the other considerations, which I don't have up there, but while you were talking, I was thinking about this, is, yeah, that's the, when we think about the congestion management toolbox, it's interesting because one of the things that we were all, we've always been promoting, especially during the periods when we were ordering on not being in air quality attainment in the region, you know, looking at things like promoting remote working as a solution to trying to address congestion, and, you know, it just never picked up or gained much momentum until this past year. And so, you know, a lot of communities, you know, thinking about, and bedroom communities in particular, like, are there ways, are there things the town can do to kind of help facilitate that and, you know, keep that as an alternative, even though we're starting to ease back into our regular commuting patterns? But definitely still an important consideration to be thinking about telecommuting as a congestion management strategy.
Right.
And, you know, there's other, the last few things there are just, you know, we, the last, I know the town has invested a lot in the electric vehicle charging stations. That was something that we highlighted in the last comp plan. The streetscaping is another important piece. And then, you know, what we've already talked about, the traffic impacts from a lot of the new housing developments and how we address that going into the future, as well as the industrial parks. So I know those are things we probably won't have answers for in the comp plan, but important points to make sure we're highlighting.
Mr. Williamson, just mentioning charging stations for electric vehicles. Could you just remind me what Town Council decision was when this was discussed, you know, a meeting or two ago?
So several years ago, the town bought several charging stations and found locations for them at two hotels and a gas station. And then as they fell into disrepair, they became kind of cost prohibitive because basically had to be replaced. And so the intent now is to turn it over to those who ideally would be benefiting from the extra traffic coming there from the hotels and the gas station. But, so that's what we're working towards now. The, just, you know, I mean, the Comfort Inn, so that they did not see much benefit. They thought they were just kind of helping the town by having that there, but they weren't really benefiting. So we are, neither of those work. So we're going, we have shut the power off of those, and we're going to have those dismantled. And then the others, the owners just haven't gotten back to me to say that they either want them or they would like to see them torn down. So, but there is, you know, I think, that being said, I mean, there is significant interest in grants for that, so I would hope that that would become something that businesses would look for, and really for businesses to be in the business. I mean, it doesn't, if the town are going to get it started, but, you know, over, long-term, businesses are those who benefit.
Is winning a sharp station still functioning?
I think so, based on the power bill, I believe. But he, the owner hasn't gotten back to me on whether he wants it or not, but I think there's going to be increased technology that, and the timing, I think the timing of how long it takes for a vehicle to charge, if it's going to get sped up so much, which just means they're going to get replaced and replaced. So I think it's, for the town to try to keep up with that, it seems kind of silly, but I think for the businesses then to encourage that and to get the word out would be the best position.
And more and more car manufacturers are turning towards electric options.
Absolutely.
And new startups as well. So, you know, who knows in the next five years or so, you could really see a significant trend to support.
I think you'll see a trend in lithium ion technology. I think even, I mean, we're talking about, like, you know, industry's coming, I think that would be a significant one. I did want to quickly mention about the industrial park, because we had Gregory and Chair and Vice Chair both participated, all participated in this two-day seminar, Urban Land Institute, where the Richland County Economic Development hired this kind of group of commercial realtors and developers to come in and provide some recommendations for how to develop the commercial part, the northern part of the industrial park. And. And, uh, so they had some preliminary, um, responses based on those two days, but they are going to come back with a more formal report than they will come before. I was hoping, you know, it'd be ideal to be at one of our joint, um, planning commission council ones, but I haven't heard back from them since then to schedule that. But, um, it was just something for you to be aware of, that you will be hearing a lot more about that, and it will affect the comprehensive plan and, um, and all these things we're discussing.
So as, as we move to a final comprehensive plan, or certainly for the COG to propose a comp plan to us, when, when will significant changes happen to the proposed plan in your mind? I mean, right now, we're going through the bullet points every other month, and I think that's great because, um, you bring things to mind that we haven't thought about, some of us, since we've been on the planning commission. Others were very involved with writing the current comp plan, so it's, it's not necessarily new information to them. So how, how do we, um, at what point do we whittle down or hone in on exactly what this comp plan will read?
I think, well, we're kind of moving in that direction, so as, what you're seeing here, when I present these things, is the, the inventory information that, that goes into the new, the new plan, um, where I'm kind of writing, it'll be sort of new narrative rather than building off of the, the last one. Um, and I'm taking notes as we go through and, and thinking about this discussion, but the, I think one of the, the, the big important things that we, I need to kind of sit down with Carol and talk about is how we, uh, how we go about proposing kind of the goals and strategies, because I think that's where, where you all really have, are going to have, want to have a lot of input and say and, and what goes in there. That way it, it becomes you're, you're kind of proposing where, what we need to be doing to kind of move, move the plan forward, the, the vision for the town. Uh, and, you know, certainly we, we'll kind of throw, put some things up there for, for you to consider, but, um, definitely really want to get some good, good feedback and thoughts from you all on, on what those, those priorities are. And so I, I think one of the next steps is, we were talking about, um, you know, having a, a public input session. We've been kind of reviewing, um, you know, some of the, some of what we've heard so far and just trying to take all that into consideration. I think that'll be a big part of it. And at that point, really, I think we can start trying to narrow down, um, what some of those, those goals and strategies are going to, going to look like. So to, uh, probably in the, let's see, what's, this is July, um, so when we come back in September, I think we're looking to have that public meeting sometime in the September timeframe. Um, so as we get into fall, I think is probably when we start, you know, having some of those, those discussions and having this thing start to take shape.
And that kind of reminds me, um, Mr. Chairman, of our survey, which is, you know, close to being wrapped up. You have some written entries that needed to be included. Once that's finalized, that's, that's, that's probably going to be our, um, kind of template for, for that discussion. As a representative opinion of, um, the residents of the town, what they would like to see, what they regard as, you know, omissions or shortcomings. So that'll be a useful document when it's, when it's finally issued.
So my thinking on that, and I'll get y'all's consensus, but, uh, you know, is to let Gregory work on drafting some goals from anybody's gotten from the survey and from meetings here and, uh, and have those draft goals as part of a separate public input session in September, but that'd be the sort of the, um, that'd be the release essentially of the results in the form of goals, like this is what the results showed us. Is that y'all's intent and, uh, would you like to see it in a different format?
I certainly think that was the intent of the survey. And, and Malcolm's kind of been driving with the COG, the comp rewrite to this point, and now you've been coming in. So the survey was kind of a two-fold document. We as a planning commission brought up the survey as a way to get input from the town, actually from individuals who wouldn't necessarily come to a public hearing. Then that quickly got added to, um, what Town Council was trying to do on a two-year strategic plan. So I am absolutely fine with that. I'm, I'm going to have a conversation with the mayor to make sure that his two-year strategic plan, that he's not looking for those results prior to, say, a September launch. I don't see why, I mean, we're July right now, it's hard to believe July's already here, but we are. Your informational, your, like, public hearing section of this, are you anticipating that being a one-meeting deal?
Well, we hadn't really ironed all that out yet. So there, there's definitely the, the public, um, engagement or input session, but then also the required public hearing that comes, you know, later when we get down the road.
Right. And certainly would like to see, and Carol, I want to pick your brain on this, we had 601 responses to the survey. Um, and you could talk to two individuals and one will say, oh, that's all? And the other would say, wow, 601. I somehow want to engage the people that felt comfortable giving us their name and address on some type of invitation to come to a, you know, an input session for what the comp plan looks like long-term and going, I mean, you've seen them, you've seen the preliminary results of the survey. Going away, no question, traffic, congestion, home building, those are, those are the big issues of, that carry the day. Uh, and that, I think that's where we've got to spend some very key points tonight. I, I think we have to spend time digging into the heartache of traffic and congestion and home building. A lot of people are against home building, but that was after they bought their home in Blythewood. So it's, uh, in some ways, it's a double-edged sword, you can't hide a good thing. Got to have, got to have a good opportunity for people to speak their mind and be very intentional about getting good turnouts for that one singular meeting or however we choose to do that. But Carol, I'd be very interested in picking your brain and seeing the best way to do that and, and getting really the result we're aiming for. Last thing I would want to do is, is use the results of the survey and show the results of the survey to the public at the same time we're showing them how it impacted a comprehensive plan. That, that could be a train wreck if we don't do it the right way. And we want to be as transparent as we can be, but at the same time, we want it to accomplish, we, we've got to give you time to put the data together and look at the data and get it put in a comprehensive plan. I will, Sarah Lynn sent me updated email addresses on all planning commissioners, and I'll be sending out an email with the results of the survey attached. That makes for some interesting, but sometimes some boring reading. Lots of tabs to read through, but I'll email it out, um, with a, with a disclaimer that Mr. Williamson and I came up with, that here it is for the planning commission, look at it and digest it. You'll see it coming out in an email.
Okay, well, we'll, uh, you know, and I may, I may not, I'll, I'll meet with Carol and we'll kind of figure out our strategy and, and plan going forward. Definitely have some, some thoughts about how we could accomplish all that.
I really, really appreciate the, um, input on those, both those points tonight. Both very significant when it comes to the comp plan, obviously. Any other questions? Mr. Williamson, you good?
Thanks, Gregory. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to open citizens comments on our agenda, and it would be Mr. Fry. Uh, no open citizens comment, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.